Everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and welcome to our May 7 meeting. Please note the council's in full attendance. And again, I want to welcome everybody, and I'll kind of go over just a couple of steps we're going to take in the next few minutes here. The first thing we need to do is canvas the election results from this past Saturday. Have those have been delivered to me?
Yes, Margetta Hill, I believe, is here to present the results to council.
Good afternoon, evening, afternoon. I'm Margetta Hill, I'm the interim election administrator, and I'm here to give you the canvas for the official votes from Saturday's election. For Mayor, Vic Morgan, 1,292, 25.26% of the votes. Raleigh McCoy, 2,631, 51.44% of the votes. Steve Meacham, 302 votes, 5.90% of the votes. Brent Carter, 890 votes, 1740% of the votes. And for council member place five, Andrew Young, 810 votes, 59.73%. Justin Urbano, 546 votes, 40.27%. Council member place six, Zach Morgan, 1,280 votes, 36.76%. And Mark Loughlin, 2,199 votes, 63.21%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hill has provided to me the actual printouts of the totals as well as the individual precinct results. The only action that's necessary from council tonight is to accept that canvas unless anyone is interested in totaling and re-tallying the individual precincts themselves. The only action to be done is for the mayor to sign the canvas and say it is done.
Okay, let me just do that real quick, y'all give me a minute. Is that it right there? Just one signature.
That's it.
Okay, very good, okay, I do have some certificates of election that I need to pass out. And I have a plaque I need to give to Mr. Halipaska. I would like to read it real quick so everybody can hear it. Presented to Tom Halipaska, City Council District 6, May 25, 2004 to May 7, 2019. In appreciation for your 15 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Victoria, your vision for a better community, and dedication as an elected official have made Victoria a better place to live and do business.
It's been a pleasure.
Meeting, right, been a pleasure. Okay, next.
I'm the line politician.
Next, we're going to do the oath of office, we'd like to do the two council members first. I don't care who goes first, and that's going to be April, you will administer for them. But before that, I know Mayor McCoy, I think I can call you that now, he will be last, but it's very special. His son, Judge Timothy J. McCoy, he's Nuasis County Court of Law Number Five, raise your hand Judge, he's here, and he is going to he's going to administer the oath for his dad, which I think is about as cool as it gets, so. Okay, Andrew, you want to? Mr. Loughlin, come on up. I got it warmed up for you.
Thank you. It is warm.
Before we move on with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to thank everybody who showed up tonight to support me and the other elected officials here. And I can't express my gratitude any deeper than I feel tonight to have been blessed to have been chosen for this position. I just think Victoria's at a unique place right now. We have new mayor, some new council members, a new city manager on the way. And so I look forward to a really good tenure here. And I just wanted to again express my gratitude and thanks for everyone who supported us and everyone who stood for an office. Because that's a dawning task, so everyone who stood up for election, I want to give them a round of applause too. There is one thing that I would like to mention and see what the pleasure of council might be. There are three items in the E Agenda, items E 1 through 3, where we kind of reorganize council. And I would like to, at the appropriate time, perhaps suggest that we table those until we have our new city manager here, which I believe will be at the next meeting on the 21st. And I think it just would be appropriate that we're all together as a team, and we've got, I mean, we're new to the club.
I kind of respectfully disagree with that. City manager doesn't have any bearing on those three positions, they're filled by council members. And the new city manager is not going to change anything on it, and I think it's
Well, at the appropriate time, I'm just telling you what I would like to suggest. And then we'll discuss it at the appropriate time. And I know he doesn't have any bearing on it, it's just the fact that we're kind of minus a team member in what we do here. So that's up for you to decide, it's simply a suggestion. So as we move on, I think the next order of business would be to elect the mayor pro temp. And if you will handle the procedure there?
Yes, sir. The appropriate procedure at this point would be to open the floor for nominations, if anyone is interested in standing as mayor pro temp. We can open the floor for nominations, including nominating yourself for mayor pro temp. I will call for closing nominations three times, that's the formal way under Robert's Rules of Order. And then we will have a written vote for the mayor pro temp, so nominations are now open.
I'd like to nominate Josephine Solis.
It's a nomination for Josephine Solis, I'll give her an opportunity to accept or deny the nomination.
I accept.
Okay. Any others? Are there any others? Are there any others?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Jan Scott. I don't need to ask you if you accept the nomination. All right, so there are two names in consideration, I have asked three times if there are any others. So at this time, we will take a written vote. I have passed out to each of you a yellow notepad page. If you'll simply write mayor pro temp at the top of the page, and then write in the name of the person that you are interested in voting for for that position, and then put your name below that so that we know who made the vote. I'll remind those who are watching on TV, we do not take secret ballots, these votes will be available in the city secretary's office for inspection if anyone's interested. We simply do this in the interest of expediency.
I'd like to comment, will this be the first time that there would be a female mayor pro temp?
That's an interesting question, I don't know the answer to.
In a while.
In a while, anyway.
Congratulations, Ms. Solis, we are next mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now I'd like to open up items for council. And I know there's one item that would like to be moved up for item F2, another award. We could do that at this time?
Absolutely, this is the top award being awarded, Don.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, I appreciate y'all letting me take this item out of order this evening. The item that we're bringing to you today is an award that was given to the surface water treatment plant staff recently from the TCEQ. The top award stands for the Texas Optimization Program. This is a program that they voluntarily entered into, and it has very, very stringent criteria to receive the award. And you have to meet these very stringent criteria for optimizing your plant and protecting the health and safety of your citizens for 12 months. And they met that in, I believe, March, got their 12th month. And in late April, TCEQ came out and gave him their award, and did a little presentation out at the surface water treatment plant. So we thought it'd be appropriate to bring them here and recognize them in front of city council. So I think we have some members of the plant here today, Stephen Robinson, plant manager, why don't y'all come on up? Kevin Post is chief operator, Barry Heebner is our project manager, David Gonzalez and Gordon Williams are operators. And these guys, again, this was a voluntary program that they brought to me and took it upon themselves to do this program. And so I want to commend them for their efforts to get it done. It's a very stringent program, and a lot of the criteria they have to meet are twice as stringent as the minimum standards that TCEQ normally applies to surface water treatment. Oh, see, I didn't know if you wanted to get a picture or anything?
Okay, are there any other items from council?
I have one. I have a friend that was in Kentucky, sorry, it was a different state, and sent me a picture of a sign that was posted. And I think they're passing around. I really liked it, the sign says, "Change the way you give, panhandling is not safe." And I would like to have our city staff take a look at whether or not that might be a sign that we could put up, and also to see whether other folks think that that's perhaps a direction we can take. I know we've tried to tackle the panhandling problem, and we've run into some free speech problems, and probably some other problems, and that really struck me. And I can think of quite a few street corners that I think that would be a great location for.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to pull D2 and D4.
Okay, so you're asking to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes.
What were those items again?
D2 and D4.
Okay.
And I would like to propose an agenda item for next week that we talk about. Is 5 o'clock the best time for citizens to attend a city council meeting? Is this the best time to have a meeting for the citizens of Victoria? And I'd like that to be on the agenda so we can discuss it at the next meeting.
I've made a note, and I'll put that under items from council at the next meeting.
Okay, is that all the items from council? Then we'll move on to citizens' communication. If there's anyone here today that wants to speak, please come forward and give your name and address.
I'm Randy Vivian, I'm president and CEO of the Victoria Chamber of Commerce. And fortunately, or unfortunately, I was at the Capitol yesterday. And Mayor McCoy, your classmate asked me to deliver something to you.
Oh, my lord.
And I need my glasses because it's smaller print than I thought it was. And it is, this certificate says, "The State of Texas House of Representatives. This certifies that the Texas flag herewith presented to the Honorable Raleigh McCoy by Representative Jeanne W. Morrison, in honor of your swearing-in as mayor of the City of Victoria, was flown over the Capitol of the sovereign state of Texas. In witness thereof and pursuant to the authority vested in me, I have here unto fore set my hand and sealed of office in Austin, this, the 7th day of May, 2019, and it is signed by Representative Jeanne Morrison." I'd like to present this to you.
Jeanne and I go back to junior high, so it's been a while. So what a wonderful thing, thank you. It's just incredible, thank you so much. So is there any other items from citizens' communication? And I guess we'll move on to please come up.
Congratulations to the new members, I appreciate y'all. I appreciate everyone's service, and thank you very much. My name is Janie Alvarez, I live at 1108 East Colorado. The reason I'm coming up today is, one, to say thank you. 1108 East Colorado is in North Heights. Thank you for redoing our roads. We are so grateful. However, I have an issue. And the issue is, the city is spending millions of dollars to redo that neighborhood. Everywhere, from Laurent to Navarro, from Rio Grande, all the way to Red River. Lots of millions of dollars are going into that area. My issue is that we have two businesses in that area. We also have, directly across the street from me, a neighbor who is at 1201 East Colorado. What we have there, especially today, any one of you can drive by, on the corner of Lewis and Colorado, no, Lewis and Red River, is a floral shop, McAdams, you all know that, we keep them in business, I know my office does anyway. We have the Mother's Day, Valentine's Day, it's a huge business for them. What they have and what they do is they bring in a 53-foot refrigerated trailer, and they park it on the city street. This trailer has tons of flowers, those flowers have to survive with water. So we're looking at the weight of the water, the flowers, the truck, we're looking at all this weight, it's going to damage our streets. Now, I have spoken to Ms. Solis, I have spoken to Mr. Young, I have spoken to J.J. Craig. Dr. Young has confirmed to me that he has addressed it, and he even went as far as researching our city ordinance. City ordinance says, in a residential area, a truck, any trailer, any tractor trailer, any rig, should not be there more than 30 minutes. As of Monday afternoon, when I drove back home after work, there is already a 53-foot trailer at McAdam Floral. This morning, when I drove my son to school, there was the same trailer. When I came back through the neighborhood, there was not only that 53-foot trailer, there was also a second huge truck. They must have unloaded it because by the time I passed by at lunch, that truck was gone. Now, if we're not going to take control of that neighborhood, and take control of these people, and tell them, hey, either you move your trucks or you're going to be responsible for the damage of these streets. It's not fair for citizens to pay in taxes, it's not fair for the city to repair this neighborhood if we're not going to take control of it. I am contemplating in doing a neighborhood association, have to look into it and see what we have to do. But it's a crying shame if we don't take control of that issue. It's something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm not going to stop here. So we need to get it done, I'm asking council to please look into it, and let's take care of this. I spoke to Dr. Young with enough time so that McAdams wouldn't be having their trailer there. He called me back, and he assured me that it was going to be taken care of, and as of today, it hasn't been. And we also have another business, McDowell Plumbing. They also put their trailers and leave their trailers there for storage. And they're working out of our city streets, they are a business, a for-profit business. I don't see why anyone should be able to make a profit off of our streets like that. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We can't comment.
That section of code is actually on the agenda tonight, so if Dr. Young would like to respond.
Yeah, Janie, I did drive by there this morning, I didn't get back with you today as I was talking with Mr. Kaminsky and Chief Craig. So I spoke to Chief Craig just a little bit ago, they're going to look at it, you may want to speak with him on the way out. I think he can give you a little bit more information in regards, would you, would you all do that on our chief? Thank you, I appreciate it. I absolutely agree, we spent a lot of money on those roads, we don't need to trash them.
Well, my view is, if we're not going to take care of it, then let's just stop the project right here, right now, and don't fix anything. I personally want our streets fixed, but if these people are going to continue doing this, there's no reason to continue.
It's in the code, you're correct.
Thank you.
Any other items from the citizens' communication? Not hearing any of them, we'll move on to items with public hearings.
Item C2 on the agenda is an ordinance amending the 2018-2019 City of Victoria general fund budget to provide funding for the retirement of the city manager and the expenses associated with the recruitment and relocation of a replacement for that position, providing for savings and declaring effective date.
So move.
Been moved?
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a public hearing first.
Public hearing? All right, well, I think it's my turn to open a public hearing. So is there anybody here that wants to speak to this agenda item? Seeing no one coming to the podium, I will close the public hearing.
We have a motion.
Now do we have a, we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second, all those in favor?
Wait for discussion, and Mayor, if you don't mind me stepping in here a minute, I do want to point out to council members that the formality of a public hearing versus a motion, the order that that happens in is really irrelevant. And so if we wanted in that case to move forward with the motion in a second, it would be fine for us to do that. that.
All right. Well, I'll still open it to discussion. Is there any discussion on the item?
No.
Seeing none, then I will ask all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes.
There are two items remaining on the consent agenda tonight to be approved with a single vote. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the special meeting of April 9th, 2019, and the regular meeting of April 16th, 2019. And second, a resolution authorizing the city manager, excuse me, the assistant city manager to execute an agreement with Fund of Bounds Incorporated for the purchase and installation of a new playground equipment at the Lee Tracy Park, along with approval, removal of the old equipment in the amount of $300,000, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to present the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right. The next item, D2, is an ordinance amending Chapter 22 of the Victoria City Code to make various changes, including revisions to speed limits, repealing parts of conflicting ordinances, providing for a penalty not to exceed $500 upon conviction, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date.
I move to approve item D2.
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to amend. Amend it on Schedule 6. It talks about speed limits on various thoroughfares. And Guy Grant is listed as, from Navarro to Highway 77 to Mockingbird Lane is 40 miles per hour. That needs to be stricken from the record. And it needs to be, Guy Grant from Navarro to Salem is 40 miles an hour, and Guy Grant from Salem to Mockingbird is 35 miles per hour. I drive that way all the time. It's 35 miles per hour.
Is that what it is now?
That's what it is now, and it's been that way for years.
And so is this trying to change it, or are you saying that there's an error?
It's, there's an error right here. It needs to be amended.
Okay.
To be correct.
He's correct.
That's correct. What page? I'm not sure.
It doesn't have a page. It's Schedule 6. It's the first page of Schedule 6.
Council members, I think we can consider that to be a motion to amend if we can get a second to that.
Second.
All right, now we have a second to that motion, and I think Donald's prepared to address that issue tonight if you don't mind.
I think Councilman Lofgren is correct. That section of road, if you drive it right now, is posted speed limit between Navarro and Salem is at 40. And then if, on the other side of Salem, between there and Mockingbird, it's posted at 35. So it's up to the council how they want to handle it.
So this would essentially be a correctional amendment, just to make the paperwork match what's actually out there on the road.
That's correct.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to that amendment. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that, the amendment passes, so we'll move on to the
Discussion on the
Motion as presented. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, in this code, I have two sections, 2256, which Ms. Alvarez talked about before. We'll, I'll actually read what the code says. It says, "No commercial vehicles larger than 1-ton capacity trucks shall be parked on any street in any residential area for a period of more than 30 minutes, except during the process of loading and unloading." And so that's, that is her gripe in that regard, and I understand that. On 2257, there has been concerns, and I've spoken with the chief of police, in regards to vehicle parking upon a roadway such as an RV in storage of excess for 24 hours. And can I get a clarification on this? I mean, we don't need to go in, but I just, what does that entail? Moving of a vehicle? I've had quite a few complaints, and we've kind of dealt with it, but let's do it out in public.
Yes, sir. And Chief Craig may want to address it directly himself. I believe he just stepped out. So while he's out, I'll address what I've seen on my end of it. As the city's prosecutor, I often get asked the question, what does it mean to move a vehicle? Is it adequate to move that vehicle? Occasionally, we will have defendants who have been charged with this crime come into court and say, I moved that vehicle, but I just happened to park it in the same place the next day, and the officer saw it in the same place. And officers, of course, are using procedures to try to mark the vehicle and identify that it is, in fact, in the same place. And what I tell officers who ask me that question is, if you believe in your discretion as a police officer that that vehicle has not moved within 24 hours, write the citation. And then it will get presented to municipal court, and that's why we have courts that consider those things. And it will be up to the police officer and the defendant to come into court and try to persuade the judge one way or the other. Unfortunately, there's not much more clarity I can provide to it than that. I've been asked, is it acceptable to move the vehicle three feet, five feet, seven feet? And it's just very difficult to draw an arbitrary line and say that somebody has to move their vehicle a certain distance. The law says if they're storing it on the street more than 24 hours, it's a crime. I know that's not much of a clarification, but I hope it helps.
No, I just look at moving a vehicle two inches as still storage if you're not taking it.
I would agree with that statement.
Getting around the spirit of the law.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
What are you saying? We need to maybe consider a clarification of that?
I don't know if we need to go anymore. I think for the public's standpoint, and possibly our police department to understate that.
Okay. All right.
So we're ready to take a motion on?
Entertain a motion, then?
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
So we just need a vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay.
I was just going to comment that, you know, while I'm sensitive to what you're saying, I had somebody contacting me sort of the other direction. They had family coming for Thanksgiving. And, you know, when I go visit a relative, I park my car, and I don't move again until I leave. And they were concerned that there were going to be cars parked in front of their neighbor's house for two or three days. I really didn't find that that offensive.
We're dealing with this for months.
Well, but this ordinance is 24 hours. And, you know, I don't know if there's something in between there.
I would advise council that the longer that time period is, the harder it is to prove.
Yeah.
If it's longer than 24 hours, and the officer who is on the stand in court has to somehow prove that, or the prosecutor has to prove, that it was at that location for the entire time, let's say we just change this to two weeks, then it's, the officer then has to prove it was there every day for two weeks. And so it becomes harder and harder to prove. I understand what you're saying. I think this is an area where officer discretion might be useful.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the original motion? Then I would ask all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That takes us to item D4, which is a resolution authorizing the assistant city manager to execute a renewal of the agreement with Champion Infrastructure LLC for street sweeping in the amount of $352,600, and declaring an effective date.
I move to accept item D4.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Open it up for discussion?
I have a question. The $352,600 comes out of the general fund, correct?
No, sir. That comes out of our water wastewater pretreatment budget. Comes out of 4041, 41PRA.
Street sweeping comes out of?
Yes, because we use that to protect our stormwater, which leads to our waterways.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
Nope.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That takes us to item E1, which is a resolution appointing a new member to the Metropolitan Planning Organization and declaring an effective date.
As I mentioned before in my opening remarks, given the fact that we have two new council members on here, and these come up, and it's kind of a reorganization of council, I just don't see any issue, the urgency to fill these positions until we all kind of get to know each other a little bit. It has nothing to do with the authority of the city manager. I understand that fully. But I just thought it would be a collegial way for us to get together and save this for our May 21st meeting, when we've all had a chance to, at the end of this meeting, to say hello and get together. And that's my concern.
So the mayor is actually authorized to make a motion to table, if you would like to make a motion to table that resolution.
Well, do we have to take them one at a time? Because if it's not going to be one or, oh, to me, it would be one through three.
It's kind of a question of how formal you want to be. As the presiding officer, the presiding officer can simply skip these three items and instruct us to move on to the next item on the list.
There's no hidden agenda here. There's just, I just think that it would be a good thing that we all get to kind of learn to speak to one another tonight at the end of the meeting while we're still in here, just say hello and whatnot, and then move on. And then our next meeting, and handle this in that meeting.
Well, I'd like to sort of echo what Councilman Bocknight said earlier. And partially now, when you're talking about us all getting together and saying hello, I mean, if the meeting's going on, that's fine, but otherwise, we really can't do that.
I'm just talking here.
But I will say, serving on MPO, that Councilmember Jalapaska was the chair. And so that spot definitely needs to be filled before the next meeting. I don't think they're going to have a meeting in May, so it does have to be filled by June. But just for the purposes of setting agendas and things, I want to make sure, if we pass this tonight, that we do not pass it a second time. And I'm not so sure that we really have to, but if we do.
That's no intended, and I was told that there's no urgency.
Right. But to me, this is just regular order of business. It's replacing people on the organizations that, Mr. Jalapaska and a couple of them, and I can't remember the third one. But it's just regular order of business to fill these spots. I know when I got on council, I shied away from any of these, because it was enough to learn what was going on at this council meeting. And, I mean, I remember getting kind of chastised for it, too. And you and I came in at the same time, and it's like, come on, you got to step up sometime. I'm telling you, the people that have been here are, as we discussed at last city council meeting, are saying, yeah, we'll go do it. It's time to go do it. We've got a good handle on what's going on here. I think it's just appropriate to go ahead and fill them now.
Well, I'm open to the will of council, and I would just entertain a motion that they be tabled till the next meeting and open it up. So if no one wants to make that motion, then we'll just go on and deal with it.
Can we just ask if people here have interest in some of these committees and maybe see if there's feeling?
Yeah. Ms. Scott, I believe you may have been absent from the last meeting. That discussion was held at the last meeting.
Okay.
And I know that on E1, which is the item that we're currently discussing, Councilmember Solis has indicated an interest in serving in the MPO. Now, at the request of the former city manager, we did not fill in her name into that resolution yet. But it would be our normal practice, when only one council member has indicated an interest, to put their name in that blank and then approve it.
I would be interested in MPO and Sales Tax Corporation Development Corporation. I'm not shy, because I'm a new member.
And I had stated, and it's in the agenda, that I would be interested in being appointed to Sales Tax. I was serving on Sales Tax as a citizen when I got elected, and I got bumped off because I was on council. However, having had that experience, and I know there are other people interested in serving, I'm willing to withdraw my name and let, I know Councilman Bocknight has expressed interest in now. Councilman Lofgren.
Let's proceed with MPO.
At this point, Mayor, we actually do not have a motion on the floor to move forward at all. So there's a couple ways we can handle this. Since we have a resolution that has a blank and needs some attention one way or the other, the person who makes the motion could make a motion to approve it with a person's name in the blank, and then that would go for an up-down vote. And if it fails, we could have another motion with another person's name in the blank. Or if you would prefer, we can simply back up, vote as we often do, for which name goes in the blank, and then vote on that.
I was not clear that he was calling for a motion to wait, or to table it.
Correct.
I was not clear.
Okay.
I will make a motion to table it.
We have a motion on the floor to table.
Moved. Any second?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any discussion? Further? Hearing none. All those in favor? Tabling?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Aye.
Okay, so that vote fails by a 3-4 vote.
I move to approve item E1 with Josephine Solis filled in as the person to serve on the MPO.
I second that.
Okay. Any other nominations, or?
The motion's been made to approve with that name in the blank.
All right, so we'll move forward with that motion. Any second to that motion?
I second it.
Second, I'm sorry, didn't hear.
We do have a second.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations to Solis. Item E2, I'm sorry, there was one next, so that's a 6-1 vote. Thank you for catching that. Item E2 is a resolution appointing a new member to the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation and declaring an effective date. Likewise, this also has a blank in the resolution that will need to be filled in. Councilmember De La Garza has already indicated an interest in this board.
I move to approve item E2 with Councilmember De La Garza filled in for the appointment to the Victoria Health Facilities Development Corporation.
Second to motion.
It's moved and seconded. Let that move forward with Councilman De La Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Item E3 is a resolution appointing new member to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Board of Directors and declaring an effective date. And we discussed this one last week, and I believe Councilman Bocknight expressed an interest in this one.
Has to.
And tonight, Councilman Lofgren expressed an interest tonight.
Very interesting.
Thank you. So we have two now.
Take a vote.
Would you like to take a vote before we move forward with this?
Well, I think you need to.
Then let's do that, okay? As we did earlier tonight, and I apologize, council members, for not having pre-printed ballots. As I said, we normally would simply fill in the names in the blanks. So this is a bit unusual, but that's quite all right. So if you will write at the top of this piece of yellow paper that we are voting for the Sales Tax Development Corporation, if you will write in either Jeff Bocknight or Mark Lofgren's name, and if you will put your name at the bottom below that, you can return those to me, and I will tabulate those. By a 5-2 vote, we are filling in the blank with Councilman Bocknight's name.
Thank you.
And then we will entertain a motion to vote on that resolution.
I move to adopt E4 with Councilman Bocknight's name filled in. E3.
Thank you.
Second. Moved and seconded. To adopt E3?
Three.
With Councilman Bocknight's name inserted. There's no further, is there any discussion? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item E4 is a resolution authorizing the assistant city manager to execute the Second Amendment to a contract with Texas Land Management Doing Businesses TLM Gardenville for composting services to extend the contract term and adjust tipping rates and declaring an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm just here to answer questions if you have any. I'm just here to answer questions if you have any.
Seeing no discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Item E5 is a resolution approving an amendment to the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation Programs and Expenditures for Fiscal Year 2018-19 in the amount of $271,787.46 for the Crestwood Drive Reconstruction Project Phase One and declaring an effective date.
Moving to accept item E5.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept E5. Any discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay.
At the Sales Tax Development Corporation meeting on 20th of April, the amount that we amended the budget for the Sales Tax Development, I mean, for the Crestwood project, because that's the $271,000, is for the Crestwood project, right?
Correct.
Okay. The bid came in, the bid that we're going to accept, came in at lower, so why are we amending the budget?
No, the the low bid came in at $4,136,157. The total project, when it was approved, was at the $4,156,170, but we'd already expended $291,800. So at the time that we approved, that we took the bids for this contract, we had $3.8 million remaining.
I understand that. But last week, when we were looking, when you opened up the bids, there were over $5 million, both of them. The only reason that it was, you know, one of them was less than the $5 million was because of that 9,600 foot feet or whatever it is, the concrete. So did we not have the money for that contract? Is that why we bid it? It looks like it. It just doesn't look right to me, that's all. I questioned it last meeting.
Councilwoman Solis, I'm sorry, I don't remember any of the bids being over $5 million. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
I forgot to bring my copy, but yeah. The original bids that were opened were over $5 million.
The, prior to the, prior to the, prior to the change on the unit prices?
Right.
Oh, yes, ma'am, they may have been.
Okay, so, and I said, why are we bidding this out again if this is going to not change? I told you there was $93,000 on the table. So now we're coming up, and we're amending the budget because we're short $271,000. I understand that. I'm just seeing that I just, something doesn't look right to me, and I'm questioning that, that's all.
I'm not following your questioning. I'm really sorry. The bids came back, and they're $25,000 less than the low bid after we amended the.
But did we know we were going to need an amendment then? We didn't talk about amending the budget then, when we were talking about opening the bids.
We knew.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Let's back up a little bit. From the original bid, you know, when we opened the original bids.
Right.
I think they came in, that's the number you were referring to, five. And there was some mathematical thing.
Correct.
Right.
And everything, it was not right from a procurement standpoint. It was decided from a legal basis that we need to go redo all this, okay? So that's the reason why it was redone. Because of a legal procurement reason.
Okay.
Because it was not done, you can have one bidder complain because you give favor to somebody else. So instead of having an issue, it was rebid completely.
I understand.
Go back to the first deal. Even with that numbers that they took in the first bid, even with the adjusting for the unit price.
Correct.
I still think we were still, we didn't have enough in the budget to accommodate the project itself.
That's what I'm seeing.
Right. We didn't have it the first time. The second time we came back, I think came in, what, $20,000, $30,000, $50,000 less now?
Twenty-five thousand less.
Twenty-five thousand, that's because we rebid it.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm touching on your.
No, no, I know what you're saying, and that's what I'm trying to bring up. We were talking about opening up a bid and awarding a bid, and we were going to have to come and do in a budget amendment. And, you know, I just don't think, I think this should be brought up and told to us. You know, yeah, we're going to do a rebid, but we're also going to have to do a budget amendment, people. You know, don't tell me that, okay, we're going to rebid and then come back and say, oh, now we're going to give you more money on it. You understand what I'm saying?
I take it.
I think that there needs to be a little bit more, you know, transparency, that's all, okay?
Now, now I'm confused. Are we amending the city's budget, or are we amending the Sales Tax Development Corporation's budget?
Councilmember Scott, what we're doing here is we are approving the amendment that has already been made by Sales Tax. Sales Tax Development Corporation has already chosen to amend their budget, but their expenditures must be re-approved by council. They must be ratified. And so all that council is being asked to do now is to ratify the budget amendment that has already been approved by the Sales Tax Development Corporation.
If I may, now before you sit down, is that discussion done?
That answers my question.
I had two questions when I kind of reviewed that. I noticed that there was one bid that was a bit higher, but there was a six months difference, I believe, in the, in the, in the time factor of that, of that higher bid.
Yes, sir.
Does the city have a mechanism to kind of quantify? You know, time is always money. And I believe I asked the question, is there any kind of off-the-books kind of expenses in managing a project for six months longer? And do you consider that when you, when you make bid recommendations?
Yeah, I don't ever use the term off-the-books.
Well, I mean, not off. It is kind of, I mean, it's in a different way that's not here tonight when we make these decisions. That's, that's what I mean.
We, we do look at our, I guess you could call them the hard costs associated with each project. But regardless of the time for, for either one of these, these contractors, the biggest expense we have would be our, our staff inspectors, our engineering inspectors. That cost doesn't go away because those two, 240 days disappear. We still have those inspectors. They may just get assigned to a different job, or they may go fill in for a different inspector while that inspector's on vacation or out sick. So, so really, the, the dollar amount that's associated with the city overall doesn't change just because we accept a contractor that may have less number of days listed or bid.
Right, well, I was just curious if that, that's, the next thing, if you could explain a little bit about what the city does to ensure quality control.
Sure.
On these projects.
So, again, I mentioned that we have our, our in-house engineering inspection inspectors. We have four of them. Typically, we have five. We have one that's retiring right now, so we're down to four right now. But those guys are out on these projects every day, making sure that the jobs, the work being done out there meets, meets specifications, meets, meets what our engineers designed. In addition, we do testing, whether that's soil compaction testing or concrete cylinder break testing, you know, whatever testing we may, is required by the specifications, we, we make sure that that testing gets done. And if there are any questions that arise during the, during the project, our city engineers will handle those and make determinations.
And that testing is done by an independent third-party lab?
Yes, sir, it is. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Good questions.
You'd actually brought up a question I had for the next one, but about the value of time.
And excuse my expression, I suggest you don't use the same. So if there's any more discussion on, on item four?
Five.
Five, I'm sorry, item five. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item E6 is a resolution adopting the 2019 revision to the City of Victoria's Water Conservation Plan in accordance with Title 30, Chapter 288 of the Texas Administrative Code and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt item E6.
Second.
And a motion and a second to accept item six. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Item E7 is a resolution awarding the Crestwood Drive Reconstruction Project Phase One to Brandon Paving Company Limited for their low bid of $4,136,157.46, authorizing the assistant city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve item E7.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept item E7. Is there any discussion?
Well, again, with your question, what is the value of eight months to our public?
Well, you have six months, I believe.
No, this one's eight, 240 days, I mean, 240 days. We got eight months for $81,439 difference of, that's eight months of time. Is there a quanti, is there a way to quantify what the cost is per month for our public? And what the value is of that?
I can, I can tell you that, on average, our weighted salary for inspectors is about $225 a day. You know, I didn't do the math out on that, but, you know, I can come back to you with a report on it.
I should know. When you get, when you get two that are really close, that's fine. But when you have eight months difference between it, and it's not just from inspectors, I'm thinking about the public trying to drive on the roads and what the value is to our public from that standpoint. And I didn't know if there was a way to quantify what's that, what's that value in time to the public.
Right, I'm sure we, I'm sure we can. I just don't have it right here in front of me. But again, you know, there's, there's some other costs that we could throw.
Sure, I just, you know, questions to ask.
Understand.
Did y'all do a grading system of these?
No, I think we typically can, typically, we, we look at our history with the, with the contractor. And the only time that we'll go out is if maybe a low bid contractor or somebody that we're not familiar with will go reach out with, to some of their references. But is there anything else you could add?
Both, all three of the contractors bid on this project we were very familiar with. Brandon is currently doing work for us now, so is Triple B Paving, and so is Lester Paving. So they're all three viable and well-respected companies.
If we were to go with Triple B because of the days, where would the extra money come from?
I know where some would come from from not having election.
About eighty, about $85,000, I think.
If council wants to go that route, we'll make it work. I'll find it in general fund somewhere and come back and report to you. Some underruns, I take it off what I was going to use for next year, but we can use it now. But it's your call.
When you visited with these contractors, did any of them express why there was such a disparity between 360 days and 600 days, what the difference was?
My, they did not. My, my assumption would be that Triple B is a much larger company, so they have more resources to throw at it, more crews, more equipment. The other two are local contractors and not quite as large.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Lester had 395 days on the original bid when you first opened it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, 630. 630, and Lester had 560.
Oh.
Are there liquidated damages in that contract?
Yes, sir, there are, $500 a day.
$500 a day?
Yeah, because I think.
You might explain what liquidate, well, may you explain?
That may be a question for legal.
The simplest way to explain it is there are penalties for not getting the job done on time.
Mr. Bocknight, just to answer your question right now, the money would come from one of the SEAL COs that came in under this past year, so it's there.
Well, isn't this Sales Tax Corporation money?
I'll be using both, Sales Tax and the $80,000 come from general fund. If council would like to get it done a little earlier. It's council's decision.
I think the businesses around, you know, Crestwood would be the ones who would be hurt the most because when we did Red River, there was a lady that was always calling about her beauty shop. So, you know, at first it was fine, but then after a while, it was like, okay, when are these guys going to finish?
Ken, the specs did call for access at all times, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so specifications do require access at all times. So they, all, all businesses will have access at all times. And residents.
But it might be one-way traffic.
It's going to be one-way, either way, either way they go.
Right.
Either, either contractor you use, you pick.
But for eight months longer. So. That's the thing I'm struggling with.
Doing a quick calculation, if they went 600 days, if Triple B went 600 days, it only takes 164 to eat up that 82,000, so they would end up being even lower. Hadn't lost anything.
$81,439 is a lot of money. However, eight months is a lot of time. And it would be my, my recommendation, I would, I would go for the shorter amount of time for our public.
I'd just like to give staff a second to, I mean, they said that they were familiar with all these companies because I know that there's more that goes into the bidding process than just choosing the low bid, even though we wish all things were equal. And I think they indicated that they didn't have a problem with it, but I'd just like to hear that again.
All, all three of these contractors are, are good contractors. We, Triple B's working on Placido Benavides right now. Brandon's working on our, our Onyx project, and Lester's got, they've got another project, Colorado Street right now. So they're all good contractors.
Thank you.
I have a question. Could you clarify the bidding process? They bid and they give you the timeframe they can do it in? We don't get, we don't set a timeframe we would like to have it done in?
No, sir, we, we ask them to provide the time that they think they can do it in. And it, because it's based on, they know their schedule, they know their staffing level, they know how they, how they work. So we, we ask them to provide that.
What would be the fallout from future bids if, if we switched from the low bid to a shorter time period bid? Is there any fallout that we receive as a city?
If I may, I think if, if, if we're going to consider this, we may have to defer and let legal counsel review the bid specs because they can be written in many ways.
That's right.
Many times when, when specifications are written, there's verbiage in there that time is of essence and, and is to be, and can be considered equal to dollars. I don't know, I haven't read the documents myself.
Typically, the statute allows us to award the, the bid to the contract that provides the best value to the city. It's, it's commonly referred to as the lowest bid. But best value is, is, I think, the phrase that's actually used in the statute. And I think this discussion may be establishing that time is more valuable than money in some cases. However, if council is interested in pursuing an amendment to this and awarding to someone other than the low bid, I would request that you give me two weeks from now until the next council meeting to go back and review the bidding documents in order to make sure that that change is allowable the way that we bid this project. It would be a two-week delay in the project, and I know the last time that this was before you, you were very interested in moving forward. And, and some might see some irony in waiting two weeks in order to accept a quicker bid. Nevertheless, if that's the direction you want to go, I would request the, the time to confirm that because certainly, we don't want to get into a, into a legal matter with a company that submitted a low bid and then doesn't get the award.
What's the value of seven and a half months? But that also sets a precedence going forward as well.
It like, makes us a little less predictable.
Well, no, I think, I think that. Definitely spell out some criteria that bids are going to be evaluated on certain items.
And I, and I would say precedence, but not binding precedence.
Sure.
Okay.
But again, I, my experience, it's, it's, it's a lot of how the document says. I mean, I mean, every contractor bids this under a set of rules. It's like a set of rules. And what you're compelled to do, or what we're compelled to do, is follow the rules as they were laid out. So I think we need to be very careful. And whatever, I would suggest that whatever we ultimately do tonight, that perhaps in the future, we make sure that we build leeway in to documents and that we express that the time is equal in value to money because it's, it's how you set it up in the documents.
Yes, you're right, that council, that, the bidding department can certainly set up those documents to establish a scoring mechanism that includes time as a part of the scoring mechanism. And so it's certainly something we could look at in the future if council's interested.
So I would think if, if you want to move on, I would strongly suggest that if you, if, if we're considering an award on time, that, again, two more, two more weeks, and then we know for certain what we're, what we're doing.
Move to table item E7 until a definite time period of the city council meeting of May 21st.
Was there a motion on the floor? Yes, there was.
Do we have to amend that motion?
No, no, sir. It's appropriate to take a motion to table at this time.
Great. Good deal.
I second.
I'm learning.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to table.
Okay.
About three seconds.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, so we will bring this back on the next agenda. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity to review that.
Yeah, I guess we move on to city manager reports?
Yes, sir, we have three remaining. Colby has the first one. I will make note that this this report was originally requested as an item from council, from former Mayor Plasic, who I'm sure expected to be sitting here in this seat to hear this report instead of watching it on YouTube. But Colby, still, I think it's an important thing for Col to get Colby to get information out about the latest on what's happening at the park.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Mayor, council members, like Mr. Kaminsky said, a few months ago, I reported that we that a project that we had with a duck pond to to drain the duck pond and to dredge out around the shallower areas to help water flow. We were doing that along with some some sidewalk work and some shoring up around our pump house for the golf course. Once we drained the duck pond, the the curbing that goes around the entire border that holds the sidewalk up, plus holds the the ground from moving into the duck pond, is no longer supported into the ground with a pier. And so that curbing is being is just held up by the strength of the concrete. We didn't feel like it was safe at that point to continue the project. And so that's when I came back and talked to you, to this board about delaying that and looking at our options. Myself, along with engineering, has went out and looked at some different options of what we could do, what we thought we might be able to do. All those options have come back three or four times what our original budgeting price was. And so we feel like at this point, we are researching to make sure, one, we can do everything within the floodway and not have any issues. We do feel like that we're going to need to go out to outside help to get some engineering behind this, get some help. And so I will come back to you shortly with that proposal of what we're going to do as far as outside help and looking at getting some experts in here to to give us that. We will also need to get some direction with council as far as what do we want the the duck pond to look like with with different levels of of how we can proceed. And and so those are some some decision points that we will be bringing back shortly to you. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about that project.
So is it fully drained right now?
Just the smaller pond is.
Smaller pond?
The bigger pond is is we we brought it down a little bit so that we could do the a semi-retaining wall around the the golf course's pump house, and then we raised it right back up. And so there's still access to it, just not to the far side that's nearer to the golf course clubhouse.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colby. Donald has the other two reports, Mayor.
Okay. First report I have is an update on our ASR project. Last time I came before council was to to bring you the bad news, that we had had a failure down hole, and we needed a little bit of extra money to to work on that project and make it viable. I'm here to report tonight that all that work has been completed, was completed a while back. We actually started putting water back down hole earlier this year and put almost 50 million gallons down hole. We let that water sit for about a month, and we brought it back up, about 5 million gallons of it. A little bit of that was for backwash of the well. Some of it was for sampling, and the rest of it, we actually chlorinated and put into the distribution system and and use in the city. The final draft, the final, I'm sorry, the draft report has been written. Some comments have been made. Our engineering firm, Arcadis, our consultant, Arcadis is finalizing that report, and they'll be sending that off to the Texas Water Development Board in the very near near future. I think that that report is due by the end of this month. I expect them to have it to them in just next week, probably. So, you know, a couple of things that we learned from this project was that, in reading the draft report, that ASR is a viable option for Victoria. You know, when we did the sampling and the monitoring, the water that was down hole that we brought back up had very, very, very similar characteristics as the water that we put down. The only difference was small changes in the nitrates, then, of course, the disinfection had gone. But other than that, we brought up surface water. So that water is not migrating, it's not mingling, it is staying put where we expected it, where we expected it to, just as the the preliminary report said it would. One thing that I wanted to bring back to council's attention was that, you know, when we we started this process, we we asked for an ASR permit, ASR well permit. TCQ did not give us that permit. What they gave us was an experimental well permit, which has a shelf life. December 20, December 2020, that goes away. So we have a little bit more time to do some cycle testing. We can do some cycle testing this summer. We can do cycle testing again next summer. And we can take that data and use it to go back to TCQ and hopefully get this well permitted for a full-blown ASR well. I will tell you that you'll you'll see in the CIP presentation and then in the proposed budget next year that we've moved the construction of the ASR well out of 2020, and we'd like to do an assessment. One of the lessons we learned from this was, don't rehab a well into an ASR well. So we want to kind of reassess with the data that we have now and find out, you know, how do we get those permits done? And where's our best options to, what are our best options, and where is our best options to to drill a well in the future? So with that, I'll happy to answer any questions.
Donald, it's still, uh, number 19?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, 19, yes, ma'am, in the park.
Okay.
How long do you anticipate if you were to apply for an ASR well to get to approval?
I think our consultant told me that that process could take somewhere between up to a year, up to a year for that permit.
So it's faster than a landfill?
Yeah, it's faster than landfill.
We have a process.
All right.
Appreciate you pointing that out.
Yeah. And then, but to to get to that permitting process for a rehabbed ASR well, you need to do the additional testing, cycle testing that you spoke about?
Right.
Or is that just help make it a better application?
It helps make a better application. But also, you know, when we started this permit process, we had a certain window to get everything done. And that window got closed a little bit when we had the failure of the well. So everything we did was on kind of a short cycle. So now we're we're back up and running. There's still water going down hole today. And we'll have more time to to do those full cycle tests, get two more cycle tests with some some really, really long-term data.
And if we wanted to look at doing a new well for ASR?
Yes, sir.
Does it still have to go through the same testing procedures?
Yes. Yeah, it'll go well.
Do they call it an experimental and then?
No, I think, once we're proved up that this is a viable area for ASR, we can go right. They'll, I believe that they'll allow us to have an ASR well permit on our next project. I don't think we'll have to go through this experimental process again.
And I guess one other thing I'd like you to ask him is if you can permit the whole field?
Okay.
Or does it have to be a well-by-well?
I can ask that question.
So if there's some way to do a generic application and speed it up for future?
I I know we didn't have good luck on the first use of an existing well, but is there any kind of pre-testing you could do, down-hole looks?
Yes.
That to that would avoid what happened in the others before we just totally rule that out?
There there is some that you can do. And matter of fact, we did that on this last one. And it's just real hard to identify that stuff. You know, in the in the draft report, there's a section that talks about rehabbing wells, and that that it is a viable option. However, it talks about these these unknowns that you you just really don't know until you till you do it. When you put that well under pressure, putting water back down hole, that's that's where you got your issues. So it's it's a possibility, but from my experience with this one well, I would, I'm I'm not a fan of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
If you're not rehabbing an existing well, how do you choose a location for a well?
That's what the consultants are for. They will, they will point out the best. And part of that's going to be, where's our existing distribution network? Where is it close that we can tie into it and pump water in at the same time pulling water out? So a lot of that will determine by our underground piping system.
And a divining rod?
Dig a deep hole and dump water into it?
No, no, ma'am, no, no. It'd be very scientific.
Need a divining rod?
Very scientific.
I'm sorry?
A divining rod?
Yeah, no. No, no, sir. Okay, well, that's all on ASR. The last report I have is a little bit of an unusual one. If you remember back to Hurricane Harvey, even though I know some of y'all are trying to forget that, after after the hurricane, our traffic control system, especially our signalized intersections, were were decimated. All 88 of them had some sort of damage to them. The good news was that great folks from Austin came in and helped us get those up and running, and they have been up and running ever since then. Problem is, some of those have never been put back to pre-Harvey condition. Some of them had mast arms and poles, and now they're span wire. Some of them are twisted. Some of them are just real minor repairs, like they need the the lighted street signs put back up. So we have worked with TechDOT and put together a project to get the stuff replaced. And in order to, and it's eligible to be reimbursed at 90%. I think the total cost, estimated cost is about $350,000. This is kind of a pass-through from TechDOT, from the Federal Highway Administration through TechDOT to us. What's unusual about this is that typically, when we enter into an agreement for reimbursement, we actually have a signed agreement. With FHWA, they don't do that. So it's, there's no signed agreement. So it's kind of a, yeah, we'll reimburse you if you meet all the federal guidelines.
Us me.
But there's no, nobody signs it on the dotted line. And we thought it would be wise to bring that to you and kind of get your thoughts on that. Before, we came back with the full-blown project, full-blown contract for y'all to approve. And Gilbert may have some more to add. He's been involved in this quite a bit.
Staff kind of assumes that council would like to go forward and get these repairs done, to bring it back to normal the way it was before Hurricane Harvey. The funding will come from the TechDOT or past reimbursements. I have enough. I was still online, paying off debt, just have been accumulating some more extra money there. So to put to council, my ideas, the money's there, but the quick, you know, the deal is that, will we get reimbursed? Is the question, since we don't have a contract. My gut feeling is that we will get reimbursed. It's just, it's more of an FYI to let you know that there's not a paperwork on a grant here. But if council wishes, we can go still go forward, get the project done, just still have to go bid it out, procure everything, and get it done, and we can pay for it. If that's the case, we would come back next council meeting with the budget amendment, telling where the money's coming from. Donald will be going out for the bid process and come back with the contract. And then we'll tackle Federal Highway Agency and see if they reimburse us. But my gut feeling, they will. It's not the first time. It's that it's unusual. It's not a paperwork. It's not a contract. That's all.
The the only other thing that I would add is that that Ken has been working very closely with TechDOT, and he has put together a package of all these repairs and put together all the specifications and all the paperwork that are required by the feds. And TechDOT's kind of given its blessing to that packet. So the next step would be if if council wishes us to move forward, the next step would be for us to bid that out.
And if I may add, Donald.
Sure.
Donald and Gilbert asked me to look at the project a little bit on the front end to make sure that it was legal for the city to enter into this type of arrangement where we go out for bids and do the project without a contractual guarantee that we will be reimbursed for it. And the answer to that question is, we absolutely can choose to do the project ourselves as the city. Without the contractual guarantee, we, of course, are, we run the risk that we will be on the hook for paying for that project. In fact, I believe we'll have to pay for it on the front end and seek reimbursement on the back end. So there is some risk, and I think the the message that these two men are conveying today is that they have done their work to try to attenuate that risk as much as possible. And then ultimately, it will be up to council to decide if you want to go forward with the project.
But the bottom line is, they're going to have to be repaired, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And if we don't do a written contract, we save a couple of months, and time is money.
That's correct.
That's good.
That's correct.
Time is worth learning.
You got it.
No, no offense to the legal profession, of course.
Of course, of course. None taken, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
Is this the appropriate time to adjourn?
Yes, it is.
Does that require a motion?
It does not.
Can I just say goodnight?
You just bang the gavel and say, we are adjourned.
All right. I don't even know where the gavel is. So I'll just say.
Paul took it.
We're adjourned.